Good evening. I'd like to call the village board meeting for the village of Cary for September 17th, 2024 to order with roll call, please.
Collier.
Here.
Dudek.
Here.
McAlpine.
Here.
Weinhammer.
Here.
Walrap.
Here.
Stefani.
Here.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, moving to the open forum where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. I have a few people had signed in for it. Charles Tooten? Did you have a comment?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I thought that was just a list of people just coming in.
I wish people would do that, but no. So you have nothing to say with us, okay? Chris, Reiki? Oh, come on, you've been here before. We don't bite, at least most. No, I can't. Hey, Chris, why don't you make an appointment and we'll sit down and talk about what your concerns are, okay? All right, thank you. Daniel Garcia?
Sorry, I thought it was a sign sheet.
Okay. Well, noting your address, there's something on the agenda that you may want to talk about at that particular time. It's on our consent agenda, but I'm going to pull it off just if there's anybody who has any comments, okay? Is there anybody else here would like to address the village board before we get going? We'll go ahead and close open forum at 6:02. I've got a lot to do tonight, so sit down, buckle in. First of all, I'm stepping a little bit out of order. I'd like to recognize our public works department. Kaylin Noonan, want to stand up so people can see who you are? I just wanted to say what an outstanding job you did last week for the wastewater treatment plant. Your team did a phenomenal job. Tim, is he here? I didn't see him here. John's not here. They're still working. But anyway, it was awesome. A lot of positive feedback. The community was really, really impressed at, you know, your operation down there, and I just wanted to make sure that you were recognized for that. So thank you very much for doing that. Another thing that we had a lot of fun with this past week, too, is the village board has partnered with District 155 Cary Grove High School as well as the junior high with various art installations that we'll be doing around town. And we just had our very first installation installed on our public works on one of the wastewater treatment buildings that faces directly on Spring Street. We were there with the artist. It was a really kind of a fun afternoon. What a great guy, what a character he is. He was very proud of what he did. And that's the first installment that you're going to start seeing around our community, kind of showcasing what we do and that we really try to get the youth involved in what we do and in government. As you can see the picture, thank you Courtney, she's a mind reader, man. Got to keep her around. But that was a lot of fun. And they're excited about other opportunities. When we were presented, we had many different illustrations that people had, and it was a very difficult decision. But this is the one we ended up with. His take on it, he wanted something that was more of like a mosaic. He brought the trout into it to reflect the river and Trout Valley as well. So, very cool. So if you're in the area of Spring Street, drive down, I guess I should say Lake Julian. I should have went with that, but I'm going with what the artist, his intention was. So that was really exciting, too. And then I'm just going to give a shameless plug. Next week, not this week, we have the return of our Main Street Fest. It's going to be an incredible opportunity to reunite with friends and family and neighbors and people that you haven't seen in a couple of years. We've been on a four or five-year hiatus. It was six years strong, and then that little thing called COVID hit, and we kind of shelved it for a while. But we're excited to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, and it'll be a really fun afternoon. Everybody on this dais will be participating, as well as our staff, to make sure it's run smoothly. So I think I got that. And moving on to, we are the recipient of a donation from our Rotary Club, who is a partner with us in our Rotary Park, which is, we call it Rotary Park at Cary Lake or Cary Lake at Rotary Park, whatever we're calling it these days. But we're partnering with the Rotary on that. They gave us an initial contribution of $50,000. Last year, they gave us the down payment of $25,000, and over the next five years, we get an additional $5,000 to collect up on that. So I'm told, I'm guessing it's Cindy Finland that's presenting us with the check? Dave? Dave's got the big check? Okay.
Chief Finland should probably be up here, too. Integral part of that. Anybody go to our farmer's market? This guy will be there all the time. So here it is. This won't fit in an ATM.
Cindy's well.
Did you want to say anything?
Go ahead.
Well, it's my pleasure to, you know, join forces with the village and get a beautiful preserve. I hope everyone enjoys it, so.
A lot of bang for our buck. We appreciate it.
A lot of bang for our buck. If you've not been out there, it's worth the trip. It's absolutely gorgeous.
It's getting some good use.
It is getting a lot of good use, and it's just the very beginning. It's our first season in it, and it's really worth your trip out there. You can use it for free during the week or whenever, but if you want an event, there's a slight permit fee for it, but then you can reserve that whole area for like a wedding, anniversary, reunions, or whatever you see fit. So really cool, beautiful, sitting right down by our lake, really kind of a fun thing. So, thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Joe Chief. I might as well just stay. As usual, it's all about the cops. It is my pleasure to, I mean, look at the turnout we have for our police department, which our board is extremely proud of. We're thrilled that we have a force that is committed to the community as well as each other. We got to show support for three men that are celebrating their anniversaries, either five years or 10 years, and we have a brand-new officer getting sworn in tonight, too. So it's a wonderful opportunity for us. So we're going to start with Joe Fiore. Five years.
Just a little bit about Officer Fiore. He was originally a community service officer here, and then was employed by the village of Skokie for a little bit, and then came back as a police officer. He's been here five years. He is an officer, he works in the role of an officer in charge, in OIC. He's a field training officer, and because he's taken pictures back here, he's also an evidence technician.
That's good. I can't believe it's been five years already since we swarmed in. So this is awesome. Here's to the next five, 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you very much.
Small token of our appreciation. Wesley LaCron, what am I going to do with you, huh? Come on up. A Cary resident. I can call him that.
A little bit about Officer LaCron, is he was an intern with our police department, and then also he is assigned to the afternoon shift. He has completed the Lead Homicide Investigator course, and he's expressed interest in both the school resource officer position and investigations position.
Very good. Congratulations. Small token of our appreciation. Spend a good time, okay? And Alex Prafki, how about it? He's an old soldier. 10 years, Village of Cary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Don't ask with this guy, do you?
What can't I say about Officer Prafki? But he was a Navy veteran. He also acts as an officer in charge. He's been a field training officer, and he's currently assigned to the afternoon shift. So he's been here 10 years. Sometimes he's a little bit more subdued. He doesn't get recognized often, so I'm just making sure he gets recognized today.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jackson Murray. You ready for this?
Yes, sir.
Do you have your family here?
I do.
Do you want to have them all come up and stand behind you while you take the oath? You're welcome to. Definitely got to come up here. So bring everybody up. We're going to have you stand right there.
Okay.
Come on in behind me. Chief, do you want to speak first?
Well, I can do.
Later, while we get this over with. He's so tough. He's been around the block a few times with us. You ready for this?
Yes, sir.
All right, Jackson, repeat after me. I, Jackson R. Murray.
I, Jackson R. Murray.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the village of Cary.
In the village of Cary.
In the county of McHenry.
In the county of McHenry.
Before said.
Before said.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Just a little bit about Jackson. Jackson attended Huntley High School. He served as a security officer and was the replacement for Ron Rossi, our traffic service officer, for about six months. He's attended the University of Wisconsin Whitewater and the Southern New Hampshire University, pursuing a degree in criminal justice. He's currently assigned to the suburban law enforcement academy, and he's got about 12 more weeks? 12 more weeks. And he got the haircut just for the academy.
Congratulations.
For anyone that's here that's part of the recognition for the police officers, there's a cake and coffee reception right through this door, and I believe Deputy Chief Vetsor will be the person that's in charge of that.
We'll just give it a minute to clear out here. Pardon me? I can guarantee you there will be a piece on my desk. They take care of me. Yeah, that's a lot of people, yeah. Okay, moving on, we have a couple proclamations. One, I'm going to handle the, one of the Constitution Week, and then Trustee McAlpine's going to help me out with the trains. Constitution Week 2024, whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and anniversary of its creation, and whereas it's fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I'm Mark Countick, Mayor of the Village of Cary. Do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2024, as Constitutional Week in the Village of Cary, and encourage all citizens to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our Constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizenship in this great nation, dated the 17th day of September 2024. Trustee McAlpine?
Sea Tracks Think Train Week, September 23rd through the 29th, 2024, whereas in Illinois, 102 crashes occurred at railroad crossings resulting in 22 personal injuries and 18 fatalities during 2023, and whereas the state of Illinois is a leader in supporting highway rail grade crossing and pedestrian safety programs, and whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the U.S. from September 23rd through the 29th, 2024, and whereas the Cary Police Department will be participating in this important safety endeavor. Now, therefore, Mark Countick, the mayor of the Village of Cary, does hereby proclaim September 23rd through the 29th, 2024, as Sea Tracks Think Train Week, and encourages all citizens of the Village of Cary to recognize the importance of rail safety education and to obey all rail safety laws, dated the 17th day of September 2024.
Thank you, Trustee McAlpine. I appreciate that. Moving on for consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D and F, as noted on our village website and as well as the village boardroom.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dudek.
Yes.
Weinhammer.
Yes.
Stefani.
Yes.
Collier.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Walrap.
Yes.
Thank you. I pulled off item E, which was, it's related to some site work that we're planning to have some engineering work done, and there are some people here from that subdivision. I wanted to give them an opportunity to talk and hear what they have to say. But we'll go ahead and start with the motion, then we'll get things going, okay? I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an engineering design services agreement with H.R. Green, McHenry, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $44,580 for work associated with the Hilltop subdivision sidewalk improvements, and authorizing the village administrator to approve a 10% contingency for unforeseen changes in scope for the total project of $49,038.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. A couple of things I just wanted to kind of open up with and kind of calm the waters a little bit. This is just a Phase 1 engineering study to find out how we can do this, what would be the least impact on the properties that are associated. And it's a very difficult decision for us. It's something that we hold very dear to our hearts due to the tragedy that occurred in your neighborhood. I couldn't, I can't even imagine living through that. And that's why this is important for us, that we take our time and really recognize what needs to be done and how we handle it. Our first job as public servants is to provide safe communities, and anything and everything we do provides the safety of our community. So we are looking at that in its entirety. So what this motion does, it gives us the opportunity to have the engineering completed so we can see what impact this will have. One of the other factors is we don't have the money to complete a project like this. It's, you know, in the upper, it's about $700,000, $800,000 that we would need to allocate for the sidewalks in this area. So that's something that we would have to look at through grants, through various budgeting issues, overlapping budget cycles. I don't know, we'd have to look at that. So one of our items that we want to acknowledge, we have had some, an email in support of this. We've had a petition submitted to us with a majority of your neighborhood that signed it, I think all but one, stating they don't want it. So we are listening and hearing everything everybody has to say. But we have an obligation as your elected officials to make sure that we are taking the necessary steps to make an educated decision. Let's see what the impact would be in this neighborhood. Let's see how this will turn out. I think that it's important that when we first had this come to the village board, it was overwhelming support to have this. Time has kind of dwindled down, nerves have calmed down, so now people are taking a step back. So we acknowledge that, and this is why we're going to, our goal is to get the engineering done, and we will call this a shelf-ready project. That means that we have everything in line that we're able to do in the event that we pull the trigger and do it, and we find the funding to complete this project. So this is why we're doing what we're doing right now. The project is not, we have no money for it. There's no timeline for it. We are just doing what we obligated to your neighborhood when this first happened, that we would be doing the engineering study. So I'll open it up to the community. If you have questions or something, a comment that you want to make, otherwise if the board has any other comments regarding this, we can listen to that as well. Does anybody from the community have anything they'd like to say? I think we're being very fair in this. I think that it's important that you know that this weighs heavy on us. This is, you know, we are charged with making some very difficult decisions. So we're not racing through this. We are not throwing this under, you know, we're not jamming a project under neighbors' throats. We want to make sure that we have a full-handed scope of work and what the actual input would be. Part of the engineering would be to determine what would be the best layout, what would be the least amount of property that they would want. So those are the kind of answers that we will be looking for. So stay tuned. This is, like, I can't repeat this enough. This is a really good opportunity for us to see exactly what we need to do. So if there's no other questions from the audience, is there any other questions or comments from our board?
Just a quick question. Did you say that, like, 99% were opposed to having sidewalks?
No, majority were.
Majority were for it.
Opposed.
Opposed.
The latest survey that we got, the neighbors were opposed to the sidewalks.
Got it.
But that flipped.
Yeah. I don't know, but.
It was a petition.
Residents connected, they conducted their own and sent it into the village.
So for me, just having information, I feel that what was presented to us, and maybe that's why Trustee Stefani asked that question about majority were opposed, because the last time information was presented to us as a board publicly, I thought that most people were in favor of the sidewalks. Is that correct?
Yes, at that time, at the time of the public.
So when was there public, you know, something that publicly was communicated where people would hear that?
This is what we're talking about right now.
Prior to now, because if nobody came to the meeting and we're talking about it now, I mean, I guess I'm just.
Mayor.
A little confused.
So back in 2022, the village did a survey, and there was a response, not as much as we got in 2023, but at that time, there was 71% was opposed, 29% were for it. We resurveyed, and we had an open house on January 9th, where we had another survey, and we had 60% of the households were not in favor. 40% were in favor of either the four-foot sidewalk or the six-foot carriage walk. When we had our committee of the whole discussion, that's where a lot of people expressed they were in favor of it. That was an open forum here. And then since then, we had a petition after the budget was approved, and we had our open house, or I'm sorry, our CIP workshop, where we budgeted for the design to be completed. We got a petition from a resident that had half or just over half of the residents had signed the petition not in favor of the sidewalks, so.
Okay, so for me personally, I'm going to go back to what I heard here at the village board meeting instead of a petition that went around, and I just, I know that we're going to start here, and you guys are going to move forward, and we don't have money for it. But if there's a petition by one person going through the neighborhood, I'd prefer to have everything here in a meeting. I just, I don't like that. I just feel like I don't like one person going around doing a petition and then giving the information, and then it's not really here for the public to see and hear.
What exactly are you asking?
Say that again. Do you want to see a copy of the petition and have it presented here?
I feel that, I feel that the residents who live there should know about this. The people that are here, I'm assuming, maybe didn't know about it.
Well, like I had mentioned before, when this board was together, when we had the outcry of the people that were here, a majority of them were in favor of sidewalks. We are acting on what that was at a public meeting, that they had wanted the sidewalks. The mere fact that we are just doing engineering to figure out what's the best way, what may come out that we never do the sidewalks in there, but at least we're going to know exactly how it's going to be done.
Right. I understand, and I'm voting in favor for E when it gets to be my turn. But I'm just saying that I want the discussions to be in public. I don't want one person from, can you just hold on for a moment? I don't want, thank you. I don't want one person from the subdivision changing the viewpoint of everything that we've done as a community so far.
Well, I think that, pardon me to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
But I think that what we're doing here is we are obliging what the initial intent was on this. If we were saying we're not doing this because we don't want sidewalks, that would be a slap in the face to what we decided earlier as a board.
I agree with you, but I'm just saying I want to have public comments, and I want to have more conversation versus saying, we have a recent petition that maybe people didn't know about, that was majority of the residents saying that they weren't in favor of it. So I just don't want to say one person's petition is the law.
Right. We're not weighing this on the, we're weighing it on the public meetings that we've had and the commitment that we made to the neighborhood.
But when Trustee Stefani said, you don't ask that question, you said majority of the people due to the petition don't want this anymore.
Well, there was the one petition, there was the petition, there was one person that didn't sign the petition or something like that. But I don't have the document in front of me. I've seen it. I don't have it in front of me. We're just moving to make sure that we're doing what we think is best for that particular neighborhood.
I understand. I'm just asking questions about what you just said, because it was confusing for me.
Can I just make a kind of point of clarification? I think that what Trustee Weinhammer's saying is that she's just finding out about this now, and that she feels like she should have known before, the meeting tonight, and that way they could have been somehow disseminated so that everyone would know that. Again, that being aside, I think all we're looking at right now is what the agenda item is. Are we willing to go ahead and execute an engineering agreement to see what are the options to be able to do in that area? Are we, you know, whether we do it or we don't do it is not really the issue right now. It's, let's get it ready, let's get it shovel-ready. If something happens and all of a sudden we find that there's a way to accommodate this, get it done, and perhaps it's a different way than we originally thought, we may have some people that were against it be in favor of it, or vice versa, and then we're going to have those discussions again. At this point, it's just getting that initial engineering done. And I'm in 100% support of getting the engineering done to see what, what are our options.
There's a couple of comments. Do you want us to come up and state your name and address for the record, please? Pardon me, you have to speak into the microphone.
My name is Jim Absole, 155 Cherry Street, and I like what I heard tonight, that you're looking at the impact and what would be favorable. I'm assuming you'll come back and talk to us.
Absolutely.
Before final decisions are made.
Correct.
And I think that's the key. I'm of the old guard. We all raised our kids in the neighborhood, so I'm one of them that says, I don't think we need the sidewalk, but I understand those that feel they need it. So.
Sure.
I'm caught in between both worlds. I love all the people in our neighborhood, and I understand their reasons. But I think you're taking the right steps, and what you said tonight, look at it, you know, as long as you let us know what you find, and give us an opportunity to respond again then.
Right.
I did respond to a survey at one time online, so I know that that was sent out. I don't know if everybody saw that, but again, I thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Was there somebody else that had their hand up? You can just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Judy Middlestead. I live at 109 Ross in Cary. Wanted to address you. I didn't know about the last meeting we had. It was, there was no letter sent through. I have been to the other meetings that we've had, and I have stated my opinion on it, as well as others, and I just wanted to say, that's all.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to comment on this? The other, Trustee Walworth?
Hey there. 15 Ross Avenue, Ellen Branson. I know my husband has sent in lots of emails and made statements, and I really do appreciate you doing your due diligence and going through what you need to do in order to make sure that we're all doing the right thing, and if this can even work or not. So I guess I have one question, and is, from this design, when are you expected to have So I guess I have one question, and is from this design, when are you expected to have something back? That's my first question.
Director Noonan, do you have a timeline on this?
I'll get a schedule once this is approved, but typically six to nine months is pretty average for design.
Okay, so we're not even talking sidewalks until 2026 at the earliest?
I would say at the end of this next year, 2025.
Twenty, okay, perfect. The other thing that you had mentioned was grants. Would you be open, or is there any room for, my husband is also a grant writer, I just want to make sure that if this is something that you can, you need additional support with, with getting funds, this is something obviously me and my family are very passionate about, and we will help out with whatever we can. And then lastly, I didn't know about this petition. I don't know what was, I was just really taken aback. It's okay, I know, but I was really taken aback when you just mentioned that one person didn't sign it, and that's not true. I just, I'm really concerned about the validity of this petition.
Let me just, we're not basing anything on this one petition that was.
I know.
We will, the valid petitions are the ones that we, and the surveys that we, we generate. We take everything that, say, if you were to present us with a petition, I would say, we got a petition that stated this. That's just clearly what I'm saying. We're not making a judgment, we're not basing a decision, we're not making the recommendation why we're moving forward based on that. I made a comment, like I made a comment that your husband had, we had, was opposing, was supporting the sidewalks. So we are trying to make sure that everybody is being represented at the same time.
No, and I completely understand and I appreciate that. I just hope that we can, again, just make sure all these conversations are in the public forum as much as possible, just so there's as much transparency as we can get, so.
Sure.
But really appreciate it, and hopefully we can make the right steps to ensure a very safe community. My children are the future, they're still going to be here for another 10 years, I want them to be safe, and I speak on behalf of all the moms and parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. trustee Walworth?
I would yield for a moment to Courtney, I know she's got something that she really is dying to say.
I just wanted Director Noonan to clarify the petition that was received. I believe it was just, so what the Public Works Department has done through all of these surveys is compiled what houses have said no versus yes, and had been tracking that, right, just to make sure that we were getting the picture. And I believe with the petition, it was that a number of households we had not previously heard from were included on the petition. I just wanted that to be clarified, and also that the mention of the petition was in the board packet as well.
Thank you, Courtney. trustee Walworth?
No real commentary, I do believe we should look at all projects, public safety projects, and have them, if, if they seem plausible, where this is seemingly plausible, but we need, we need to know what that means, we need to know what the definitions and the scope are. So while I'll be, certainly be in favor of this, I'll need to see the results of it before we can make a decision on, on any future project. I would think that this might be a good time, since this is the main topic at hand, to have either Director Noonan or Administrator Motormonel walk us through the process. If we're going to spend $800,000 on a project like this and it impacts one, one part of our community directly, what would be the process from budgeting through open meetings, through any information dissemination out to those, what would be the process we would follow, so the folks who are interested know what to expect?
Sure.
Awesome, I'll, I'll start with, obviously, this is the first step, getting the engineering plans, making the project, as the mayor mentioned, shovel-ready. So at that point, that was the direction that the staff had received at our last capital improvement program workshop and budget workshops. So the next step, once the engineering plans are completed, Public Works team would then have an idea of, with an engineer's estimate of cost that's associated with that project. That data, and then also the resulting impacts of that project, the actual alignment, the actual design, the actual physical details of that project, like any project, would then be determined and then be presented with our other list of potential projects and our CIP process, that capital improvement program process with the next round of budgets. And so at that point, then the project, if funding is available, is then programmed for and scheduled, depending on the timing of the funds or the schedule, the desire of the board with the priorities and the CIP. So as the mayor and the board have mentioned, this is the first step, and then once that, those details are determined, we would then encompass that along with our CIP for a holistic approach to all the priorities and the needs of the village from an infrastructure perspective. And maybe Director Noonan can add to that.
Yeah, no, I think that you did a good job. I just want to add on that having this design, we would be able to host another open house where we could display those, what the design has shown, and then we can get feedback from the residents. And that's usually where we get really good feedback of, there's a tree right there, how are you going to protect that tree, stuff that the designer may not have seen, that they can go tweak those designs one last time, and then we have a final set. And then once we have a final set, if we decide this is something that is, we want to see done quickly, or in our five-year CIP, we then have a set of plans that we can present with grant funding, and normally you score higher on those grants if you have a shovel-ready project. And all, all the items described by both these gentlemen, every one of those is a public meeting. It would, nothing here would fall under an executive session, there's nothing that will qualify for this, all these will happen in the public, committee of the halls, budget meetings, and then standard board meetings. So we continue to ask you to pay attention to the agendas as they come out and when this topic is out there, to please come in and continue to voice your opinions.
And just quickly, when we have HR Green do this, we had several different options that were discussed when we had our, our last committee of the whole. Are we going to have them also address those different options, or are they just going to recommend the best option, or just so that people know what to expect? Whoever can answer that?
Well, when, as we go through the process and they come up with the design, we'll obviously have all the, the raw data that we have of residents who are in favor, who are not in favor, and we want to use that data in order to create the least impact to those who may be opposed to it, and we want to have the biggest impact to those who are in favor of it. So as we work with the engineer and we design that, those are the main components that will be taken into consideration.
And you might recall the previous discussions, we had had alternatives evaluated at a conceptual level. So this next step, these engineering dollars are for final engineering, to take those, find the most preferred alternative, and then develop those construction plans from that preferred alternative.
Perfect, thank you.
Clarifying a little bit of the timing, though, if it's taking six to nine months for the engineering study to be done, I assume you have to have the engineering study and any sort of grant application that you would put through, is that correct or not?
Grants can be applied for at various stages. Sometimes you can apply for a grant with, without engineering started, if you have certain phases of engineering started, like Director Noonan mentioned, that does help us score better in competitive grants. So there's no fixed process with regards to having part of it done before or not.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. As it relates to putting it in the budget, though, if it takes six to nine months for the study, that won't be in our next budget process?
No.
It depends on the schedule that the engineer can give us. For the size of a project, that it might be potentially done quicker. The six to nine months is typical of what we see for road projects, but we will get a final schedule from the engineer if this is approved.
Yeah, we're just a couple of months away from budget cycle, so it's.
I'm just trying to be, you know, for clarification's sake, I do think a lot of people that are, maybe all of us, I don't remember specifically, had positive feelings about it, but you see the timetable that we're faced with, which doesn't necessarily help those that are interested in getting it done, but just to be, you know, in all transparency here, to understand, for you to understand, the timelines that we work on are not real short.
And I'd also point out that through the design process, even with a pre-final set of plans that aren't 100% completed, we may have a good understanding from the engineer at that point of what the estimated cost would be, which would be sufficient for a budgeting perspective and a capital planning perspective.
Okay, that's good, helpful, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else have a final comment? Roll call, please.
Mick Alpine?
Yes.
Walrath?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Weinhammer?
Yes.
Stefani?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
We have one thing on, for separate action, I will entertain a motion to prove an ordinance authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing real or personal property or both, and for the village of Cary, McHenry County, Illinois, and for the issue of not to exceed $5,900,000 debt certificates, Series 2024 of said village evidencing the rights to payment under said agreement, providing for the security for and means of payment under said agreement of said certificates.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, mayor.
I could have come, came up with that in one sentence.
You took a breath, too, that was good. As the board may recall, on August 27th, the village board approved the IGA with school district 26 with regards to the Maplewood property. And as part of that IGA, one of the first steps that the village will be undertaking to satisfy those terms is to be issuing the debt certificates that would support the TIF assistance to the school district. So what you see before you is the ordinance that authorizes that process to begin, and so the board's aware, we do have our financial advisor, Dan Forbes, here as well, if there's any questions in detail. But this first step here is to get the ordinance approved that would facilitate and initiate that process, and at that point, the village staff and our financial advisors and bond council would go through the next steps to start the process to actually get the debt certificates issued and approved, so that we can then convey that TIF assistance per the IGA to the school district. If you have any other questions on the process, like I mentioned, Dan Forbes from Spear Financial is here, and staff can answer questions as well.
Is this still within the same timeframe we had discussed before about the bonds?
Yes, yeah, currently, the timeline provided, an estimated by Spear Financial does allow us to meet the timeline that we discussed previously.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Weinhammer?
Yes.
Stefani?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Walrath?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Mick Alpine?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on to the administrative board.
I'm going to defer to staff, they have a few updates for you.
Thank you.
Today.
Chief Finland, moneybags, $5,000 bucks.
No.
And a big check.
Not even. What I want to really quick run through a couple of slides as it relates to electric-powered personal conveyances. I know that we, in an attempt to educate the public, sent out some information that caused more confusion to some degree than it did in regards to education, and our intent was to educate the public. So these issues that we're going to be speaking of, or I'm going to kind of highlight, are actually Illinois-compiled statute issues. They're not anything that was enacted or authorized by the village of Cary. These are all issues related to the Illinois-compiled statutes and enacted, passed and enacted by the Illinois Legislature. So the first thing we're going to talk about is electric personal assistive mobility devices, some people might say segways, right? There's a definition in the Illinois Vehicle Code, these can be operated on sidewalks at less than eight miles an hour, and the local governing body can regulate their use. The next issue would be low-speed electric bikes, and when I start moving through this issue, we're going to start talking about, you know, all squares are rectangles, but not all rectangles are squares. So you'll see how that's going to kind of interweave itself as it relates to some of the definitions and some of the provisions of the Illinois Vehicle Code. So low-speed electric bikes, there's three types, there's class one, class two, class three. It's defined by the Illinois Vehicle Code. They are specifically not mopeds, but you'll see when we start talking about mopeds that some, the definition of a moped relates to the speed that it can travel, between 20 and 30 miles an hour. As you can see, a class three electric, low-speed electric bike can travel up to 28 miles an hour. The class three electric bicycles cannot be operated on a sidewalk, and anyone operating a class three bicycle has to be 16 years older. If there's regulations that prohibit the use of bicycles, they also apply to electric bicycles, and again, these can be governed by a local authority. When you talk about mopeds, again, they're defined by the Illinois Vehicle Code, they include both internal combustion engines and electric vehicles. So they're, in the definition, if it goes one mile and can obtain a speed between 20 and 30 miles an hour, that falls within the definition of a moped. It's something that you don't have to shift gears for, but requires state registration. And it also requires eye protection, and it requires that someone that operates one of these has to have a valid driver's license regardless, regardless of the classification. So you don't have to have an MRL, which would be for motorcycle or motor-driven cycle, but you have to have at least a driver's license for these. And you have to, you know, conform to many of the provisions of the Illinois Vehicle Code as they relate to motorcycles or motor-driven cycles, such as wearing eye protection or having a screen that would protect the rider. But the next thing is our favorite topic that caused our, some consternation within the public, and that is low-speed electric scooters. This was addressed by Public Act 103899. So it was an Illinois piece of legislation. It was originally filed February 9th, 2023, has three amendments to it, and was ultimately approved by the governor and effective August 9th, 2024, which means that not even, it's just over a month old. These low-speed electric scooters do not require a driver's license, they don't require title of registration, they are defined by the Illinois Vehicle Code. The local authority in the statute indicates that they need to say, the local authority can allow these, the use of these on public ways by their action. So that would be the only thing, and we have not done anything as a village board to address the low-speed electric scooters. But they can't be operated on roads that are posted over 35 miles an hour, the operator has to be 18 years or older. If you use it at night, you have to have front and rear illumination, it has to have a brake. The statute clearly indicates that you cannot carry a package, bundle, or article. Because it's not a motor vehicle, but it does have a provision in the statute that says you can't use these if you're impaired. It's not permitted on state highways, and it doesn't require, as I indicated before, a driver's license. And finally, the motorcycles, electric or internal combustion engines, they're addressed by the Illinois Vehicle Code, but they also refer to motor vehicle in that definition, and motor vehicle is something that's self-propelled. We had to ask our village prosecutor for some clarification as it relates to motorcycles, because we've encountered some youth riding these, they don't have pedals, but they have pegs, so the sole method of propulsion is the electric motor. So if you drive one of these, it meets the definition of a motorcycle. So if you ride it on a roadway, you require a driver's license for a classification. In accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code, it would appear to me that they would require an M license, not an L license, because an L license is for motor-driven cycles with displacement of 150 cc's or less. It requires liability insurance if you ride on the roadway, you have to have registration, and you have to conform to all the other issues that are related to motorcycles in the Illinois Vehicle Code, such as eye protection and things of that nature. You can use it as an off-road vehicle, because that's what they're really intended for, but you have to have permission from the property owner, and you can't ride it on a roadway, you can, you can cross a roadway perpendicular, and that's the only way you can do that, can't be operated on a sidewalk, and it's, it did require us to ask Carlos Revolo for some clarification as it related to how these are classified, and his direction back to us was, yeah, there seems to be a gap in the motor vehicle code as it relates to some of these items that we're starting to encounter. I think that's all I have, is, oh, so I do have some concluding thoughts, so there you go. But some of the things are, people that are purchasing these things really need to do some research. They have to understand what they're buying and what the regulations are as they relate to these items that we're talking about. They should only be used by someone that can operate them safely and responsibly. They should only be used by someone that can operate them safely and responsibly. Most of the regulations that I spoke about apply to public ways, like roadways, sidewalks, and bicycle paths. However, part of that new public act also allows conservation districts, park districts, things of that nature, to regulate their use on their pathways as well. And again, just to reiterate, we didn't enact this law. This is something that was enacted by the state of Illinois, and we have to kind of struggle through how we're going to enforce it. So our intent, our sole intent was to educate the public as it relates to these issues, number one. And number two, a concern for the safe operation, because we do have many juveniles driving them, and they're not always as safe as we'd like them to be as they operate them. Now I ask for any questions.
I don't have a question, but can you put this up on the Facebook page, all these slides? Very informative. The pictures will probably help people greatly.
Agreed. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Director Noonan.
Just a quick update to remind everybody that we're about to start our fall brush pickup and hydrant flushing. So starting September 30th, we're going to do brush pickup on the north side of the tracks the following week. On October 7th, we'll do the south side of the tracks. And it'll be vice versa for hydrant flushing, so the guys aren't working on top of each other. We have some regulations for brush pickup. We want to remind everybody to have the brush out to the side of the road by Monday morning at 7:00 a.m. Trucks do one sweep through each roadway. And final reminder that Flood Brothers also provides brush pickup. If you miss this, or if you have a bigger pile than what's regulated here, you're welcome to give Public Works a call, and we can schedule a special pickup for a nominal fee.
Thank you. Director Simmons?
Nothing.
Okay. Future agenda items and discussion by village board, Mr. McAlpine had requested some time.
I just, I wanted to mention that I really appreciate that Director Morimoto is sending us a lot of articles that would be applicable, seeing what's going on in McHenry County's surrounding areas. One of the things that came to my attention, and I also have had one of our food truck vendors talk to me, was about would we consider revisiting our licensing, maybe lowering it a little bit, be competitive with McHenry. Just thought that it might be worth us just looking at a couple of those things again and seeing whether or not we want to do that, especially as we're really doing all this work in downtown. We want to be able to generate some additional food trucks to come down on a regular basis. So I wanted to bring that up and see what the board, if they had an appetite to talk about that again.
Is there a bear with having a discussion on that? Yep, sure. We'll put that on a future agenda item. Anybody else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss collective bargaining, five ILCS 120/2C2, real estate purchase or lease by five Illinois SC 120/2C5, real estate setting the price for sale, lease of village property, five Illinois CS 120/2C6.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, we will return after, we have an action item after our meeting. So you're welcome to hang out, but we shouldn't be too turbulent.
So you're welcome to hang out, but we shouldn't be too terribly long.